So, good afternoon and welcome back to City Council's continuation of our budget hearing process. This is Monday afternoon, December the fourteenth, beginning our afternoon session a little shortly after one forty. Today, we have our line item vote. This is the line item vote on the 2021 operating and capital budget. As discussed earlier in our public hearing, this is actually the first opportunity to offer amendments to the 2021 budget as proposed by the Paduto administration. These amendments will be incorporated into the budget document that will be discussed at our standing committee meeting on Wednesday. With that, I would like the clerk to please take the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Yeah.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Keefe.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
This is Cal Smith. Mr. DeValle Chair.
Here.
Kate Rivers President.
Thank you very much. We also need to note that we are joined by Michael Strellick and Bill Urbannick of our Budget Office. They are going to walk us through all our amendments. The first series of amendments are being offered by the administration. The second series of amendments will be offered by. Mr. Urbannick, will you please read the first amendment?
Yes, operating amendment number one, offered by the administration. This is a technical correction to the position portion of the budget or bill number twenty twenty oh eight seven nine. There is a change in name of Chief Operation Officer to a new title, Chief Operating and Administrative Office Officer. The second amendment, which can be found on page one oh six, is a change of the Director of Innovation and Performance and Chief Information Officer to Director of Innovation and Performance.
Motion to amend.
Second.
Any discussion? I gotta open this thing so I can see, okay. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? The amendment is approved. Second amendment?
The second amendment also amends the position portion of the budget. On page one oh six, in the Department of Innovation and Performance, there is the addition of a data service engineer at a cost of sixty four thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars. There is also the removal of a senior data service engineer at seventy-five thousand dollars, his reduction is seventy-five thousand. There is also the addition of a manager data services at seventy-eight thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. There is also the removal of a project manager at seventy-two thousand dollars. There is also a removal of a senior cybersecurity engineer at eighty-five thousand dollars. The total effect of the for twenty twenty-one will be a reduction of a hundred and three thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars. The total effect of the five-year impact is fifty-five, five hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Motion to amend.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment is approved, next amendment?
Second amendment in the positions budget. Can be found on page one ninety-five, the Department of Permits, Licensing and Inspections. The first is in addition of an inspector combined electrical at the cost of fifty-six thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars. There's a removal of an inspector construction code at fifty-seven thousand and fifteen dollars. The net effect for twenty twenty-one is a reduction of five hundred and three dollars. The net effect over the five-year plan is two thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Motion to amend.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Amendment is approved, next amendment?
The next amendment is on page two twelve in the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Administration. There's an addition of four crossing guards. That cost is seventy-two thousand dollars. The total increase with health insurance and other benefits, one hundred and sixteen thousand and eighteen dollars in twenty twenty-one. Five-year impact, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand three hundred and sixty dollars.
Motion to amend.
Second.
Any discussion?
Councilman.
Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. I just particularly remember talking with the Chief Kilman and Mayor Paduto last week or the week before, whatever the session was, about how the cuts to crossing guards, again, only eliminating open positions, but still it was the elimination of a lot of positions. Was particularly painful. They mentioned that we do, as a city, have trouble filling those positions. And I'm glad to see that some of those are added back. I think there's a lot of interest in these positions, but then there are some requirements around them that make it more difficult for people to take those positions. And we're always looking to try to kind of untangle that problem. And I just want to say that I appreciate the administration kind of working on trying to untangle that. And I hope that we could make better progress in twenty twenty-one so that we can actually not have the, not have positions that go unfilled and see more crossing guards on the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
All right.
Aye.
Oppose? The amendment is approved, next amendment?
Next amendment, if we can read these next two together, if, if you would like.
Certainly.
They're both within the Department of Public Works. Can be found on page two sixty-five and two eighty-one respectively. The first is in the Bureau of Administration. There's the addition of one deputy director. Cost to one hundred and one thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars for twenty twenty-one. That total amount with benefits is one eighteen nine seven six. Total impact of the five-year plan is in addition, six hundred and thirty-four thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The next is the Department of Public Works Bureau Facility. There's the addition of one electrician at twenty-six eighty an hour. That amount is fifty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars for the position total with benefits, sixty-seven thousand six hundred and eleven dollars for twenty-one. The five-year impact is three hundred and sixty-one dollars, three hundred and sixty-one thousand and eighty-four dollars.
Motion to amend.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You is, the amendment is approved, excuse me. Next is our admin non-salaries amendments, first amendment?
First amendment, that can be found on budget page ninety. This is a budget neutral one. It is eliminating JDE enhancements, that's to our financial system, from twenty-five thousand dollars to zero. It will be mentioned, the replacement for that will be mentioned in the next amendment.
Motion to amend.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Amendment is approved, next amendment?
Next amendment is in the, is with innovation and performance, can be found on page one oh eight. There's an increase in the Google EA, twelve-dollar difference from zero to twelve. The CDW VMware licenses are increased two hundred and thirty thousand from one hundred and ninety thousand to four hundred and four hundred and twenty-six thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. numeric Wi-Fi access points, stay neutral. The third-party cybersecurity services go from zero to eighty-five thousand dollars.
Motion to amend.
Sorry. Five-year plan is seven hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Okay.
Motion to amend, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved, you want to take the next two together, I believe they're both public safety?
Yes, we can do that. Amendment number eight is budget, this can be found on budget page two fourteen. It's a decrease in the Shot Spotter program from one point two million dollars to two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Total difference of nine hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. There is not a reduction in service on that one. Total impact of the five-year plan is one million, is a reduction of one million thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. The next one is in fire, still aligned firehouses, along the firehouse line with legislation to be introduced tomorrow, I believe. The decrease here is in ESO Solutions Firehouse from one oh nine four hundred to seventy-five thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars. Total impact to the five-year plan is a reduction of fifty thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Motion to amend, very brief discussion. Any second?
Second.
Councilman.
Bill, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Bill, maybe you're not the one to answer the question, are we reducing shots but are largely because the systems are in place stabilized now? And this is money more towards maintenance as opposed to hardware?
I believe you are correct on that, but I would yeah, it'd be better to ask the safety director on that one.
Okay, I will, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cost because it was renegotiated as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? Those two amendments are approved, next amendment?
Next amendment is an adjustment on healthcare because of the PJCBC requirements. And that decrease can be found various pages throughout the budget. It goes from three million eight hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars to three million six hundred and thirty thousand dollars or a reduction of two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. The total impact to the five-year plan is one million two hundred and sixty-four thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Motion to amend.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Amendment is approved, next?
Next amendment is the Department of Law, this is to update legal case management systems recurring costs. It's a decrease, can be found in various pages of budget. Legal edge psychom replacement yearly fees will go from fifty thousand to thirty-three thousand eight hundred dollars. Reduction is sixteen thousand two hundred and twenty-one budget. Total five-year impact is eighty-one thousand dollars. Or a reduction of eighty-one thousand dollars.
Motion to amend.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment is approved. We'll now move on to the administrative amendment for our operating budget, first amendment?
This should be capital, sir.
Yeah, I'm sorry, capital, I apologize.
Yes, the, the first one is on, it can be found in the capital budget on page ninety-six or ninety-seven. It's an increase, Riverview Park landslides from nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand six hundred and seventy dollars to one million three thousand seven hundred and six dollars. A total increase of twenty-five thousand and thirty-six dollars.
Motion to amend. Good.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment is approved, next amendment?
Next amendment is, can be found on page ninety-two through ninety-three of the capital budget. It's an increase recycling containers, the recycling partnership, and that goes from zero to five hundred thousand dollars.
Our motion to amend.
Second.
Just real quick, Bill, these are the, the bins, right? These are the blue bins to be distributed?
Yes, I believe so. This is due to an additional grant, I believe.
Great, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment is approved, next amendment?
Next amendment can be found on pages thirty-six through thirty-seven. It's a decrease in bond funds, bus shelter, mobility hubs, construction from one million dollars, two hundred and eight thousand dollars total is a seven hundred and ninety-two thousand dollar reduction in the capital budget of bond dollars.
Motion to amend.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment is approved, next amendment?
Our next amendment could be found on pages thirty-six and thirty-seven as well. This is a reduction in Pega funds. Final Mile Implementation Aiken Avenue, California Avenue, Killbuck Connector, Manhattan Street. Goes from six hundred and sixty thousand dollars to zero, that's a reduction of six hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Motion to amend.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment is approved, next amendment?
Next amendment, also pages thirty-six through thirty-seven, it's an increase in Pega. Final Mile Implementation from zero to one million one hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Motion to amend.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The amendment is approved, next amendment?
Next amendment can be found on pages one hundred and forty-eight, one hundred and forty-nine, under information system authorization. It's an increase of bond funds network upgrade from zero to seven hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars.
Motion to amend. Okay.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The amendment is approved. Believe that. No, next amendment, sorry.
Yeah, one more can be found on pages thirty-six through thirty-seven. This is the, an increase in Pega funds under complete streets, traffic signal replacement Homewood in Hamilton from zero to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Motion to amend. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Gross.
I just wanted to recap this kind of administrative capital amendments. So it looks like we recovered basically a bunch of line items that had been initially funded with Pega. And we were able to do those projects with bond money instead. And so I just wanted to say and acknowledge that that was, you know, well done so that we were able to recover some Pega money. And also I'm supportive to the using operating basically rep, new revenue, which is Pega for the traffic signal replacements in District Nine. Thank you.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will now move on to amendments sponsored by council members. First amendment?
Yes. The first amendment labeled as operating amendment number three, Clean Pittsburgh Commission. It's presented by Councilman Kraus. You can find this on page seventy-nine. It's a decrease in the Office of Equity Professional Services of twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. And an increase on page two seventy-one, Department of Public Works Operation Professional Services, twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. This amendment is to restore some of the funding for the Clean City Commission from the LGBTQIAA Commission funding.
A motion to, to amend, very brief discussion.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. So just, I don't like the sound of it coming out of the Office of Equity. But I asked for this amendment just to stabilize and equalize funding to two commissions that I fought for in last year's budget to be funded. And the way the budget came over to us was that the LGBTQIAA plus commission was funded in its entirety. And the Clean Pittsburgh Commission was defunded in its entirety. And so I just asked for an equitable split so that each would receive half funding in hopes that in July could come back and ask members to support the remainder of the funding for each of the commissions. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Any for, Councilwoman Gross?
Appreciate it. I just wanted to say thank you to Councilman Kraus for clarifying that because the way it looks here on our screens, it does. We heard a lot of testimony about increasing funding to the Office of Equity. And this looks like a decrease, but it's not a decrease to the administration of the Office of Equity. It's a decrease, as Councilman Kraus said, to the funding to the LGBTQIAA Commission, which had gotten new funding. But so it's decreasing the amount of funding and equalizing that out. And I appreciate your work, Councilman Kraus, and I just appreciate you clarifying that. Very supportive.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The amendment is approved, next amendment?
This is true.
Sure, capital and operating amendment number five, presented by Councilman O'Connor, removes four point one five million from the Mon Oakland Connector. It's the entirety of their twenty twenty-one funding through a series of machinations, turning that bond money, the four point one five million of bond, the Pega and CDBG. It puts one million nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars back into the operating budget, which will go to the Department of Finance for the Housing Opportunity Fund. It also adds four hundred and twenty thousand dollars of CDBG money to the URA Small Business Development Program. A half million of CDBG funding to Housing Opportunity Fund that are CDBG eligible. We weren't able to remove all the bond funding, so a million dollars of bond remains in an adjacent project, the Sylvan Ave Bike Pedestrian Improvements. The streets. Thousand dollars to Domey or Abvenues of Hope Infrastructure Support.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve, brief discussion?
Second.
Second.
Again.
Yeah, I first want to thank my office as well as our budget office for figuring this out, as well as talking to the administration. I know I talked to some council members about this as well. We're just seeing with regards to the Mon Oakland Connector, not enough transparency from the community on this whole project. Or not for the community from others pushing this project. Our funding for our stormwater went from forty-one million to sixteen, which causes a big issue in the Run neighborhood as well as adjacent neighborhoods when talking about stormwater. So we saw this as an opportunity to line item. One, the Sylvan Avenue Trail, which we actually put money into seven or eight years ago, it was only a hundred thousand dollars. But it is going to connect the Upper Hazelwood neighborhood behind the Gladstone School, which is part of a huge redevelopment project, connecting it through Greenway into the lower end of Greenfield. So really excited about that for biking and pedestrians. So that's a big project. And then we looked at it, especially while we're in this COVID world. And once we get out of it, we see, as most council members have talked about, a number of housing issues that could come up. And we saw that it was a right time to put roughly about two something million dollars towards the Housing Opportunity Fund to help people once we get out of this craziness that we're in and mandates that don't allow people to be thrown out of their homes. But we need money in case that does happen one of these days. So for rent, rehabs, for a number of things that the Housing Opportunity Fund does, as well as putting funding forward for small businesses that are going to need loans and other support in the future. So I want to thank everybody for that. And I also want to thank, I think it was maybe September, August, Councilman Lavelle, as well as Reverend Burgess for pushing avenues of hope that will benefit a number of people in the African-American community, especially in the business districts. So we thought that that was a great project that we could initiate with this amended funds and spread it out across the city of Pittsburgh. So thank you for the support. That's where we went. And again, thank you to Mike and Bill for their hard work in getting this done.
Any further discussion?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Chair, Councilwoman Smith. I'd just like to thank Councilman O'Connor, the administration and the budget offices for working together on this. I'm, I'm glad that we're putting it towards projects that are important to all members and to our residents. And I'm really happy that, as an Oaklander, that this is, that this is something you've worked on. So thank you.
And tha- thank you. And yes, if I, I believe I, I thank the administration, but we were talking throughout the, probably Thursday night through Friday, throughout the weekend and getting the details set, set aside because I think the mayor will agree with most of us that, you know, projects like this that have a, that could have a discussion years from now, don't need to happen right now, and we're going to see a lot of issues. Not only with our budget, but in trying to support small businesses as well as people in their homes. And that's where the priority needs to be right now. And the administration did say that as well, so I want to thank them and everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, any further discussion? If not, also just want to thank Councilman O'Connor for his flexibility as this changed numerous times, trying to figure out how to swap dollars and make this all work. So thank you and thank you for both budget office, offices for working this through. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The amendment is approved, next amendment?
The next amendment is operating amendment number six, presented by Councilman Lavelle. You can find this on pages two thirty-six and two fourteen in the operating budget.
By mistake, I'm in the middle of a budget here.
Um, this is this is a transfer from police, the grants account, which houses this Stop the Violence Trust Fund. It's a reduction of five million three hundred and six thousand five hundred dollars. Those funds are then relocated as a grant line item on page two fourteen in the Public Service, Public Safety Administration, under the same type of grant line item, five million three hundred and six thousand dollars. There is no change to the five-year plan.
Thank you, need a motion?
I moved.
Second.
Can we have a brief discussion? Thank you, I just wanted to sort of point out, the intent behind this is, as already sort of noted, to move five point three million dollars from our police department over to our Public Safety Administration. We've heard a lot of conversations about how we need to be more proactive, how we shouldn't be using our police officers to go after homelessness, how we need to have healthcare advocates and others really responding and doing, and re-envisioning how we're doing the police work. And these dollars that we're moving over are explicitly to support that initiative and that effort. And so for many of those who also called in this morning and who have been calling in for the last few weeks, who have been asking us to do this, this is City Council doing all we can to begin re-envisioning how we, how we are policing in the city. And it should also be noted that this five point three million dollars is going to go up over the years. So this amount will increase over time. It should also be just pointed out that these dollars are also going to go to prevent the group balance initiative work, make it a full-time work that's occurring in the city. One of the people who called in this morning spoke about why are we funding the police when we're at a twenty-year low in crime within our city? Well, part of the reason we're at a twenty-year low is because of the work we've done with Shot Spotter. And I got to give Reverend Burgess credit for that, but the work we've done with our group balance intervention. And so we want to see an even greater decrease in homicides and activity within our city, then we have to continue to fund these sort of efforts. And this continue, and this does that, and this helps us begin re-envisioning police. So I just want to thank you all for your moment of indulgence. Any further discussion?
Yes, Councilman, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to also thank you and Reverend Burgess for doing a lot of what you've been doing in the, in terms of the anti-violence initiatives. But I also want to say that I want to make sure that I'm getting phone calls from people who, where social workers don't show up and other things. People aren't getting the response that they need. So I just want to make sure that I say. People aren't getting the response that they need. So I just want to make sure that I say that we're going to be watching this. I think we should be auditing these dollars, and I'd like to put in, I'll probably put an amendment in before next week that any funding that goes here will be having annual audit done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and also thank you for your hard work on, you and Mr. Burgess on furthering these programs. And we look forward to, to seeing them grow. But could you speak about the revenue source here? These are not, this is like, it has a zero budget impact, and the account is from grants. And I'm, I can't recall this week, I think we were calling the A G H N grant, or the H A? Could you just tell me where the grant came from? Does anybody know?
So, Michael?
Yeah, this is not a incoming grant. This is a, one of the hundred expense line items in every department is five eight one oh one grant. So our transfer to the U R A for the affordable housing trust fund lives in grants, or forty thousand for the library lives in grants. So this five point three grow into ten point eight, lives in a line item called grants.
Okay, so it's just straight out of the general fund?
Correct.
Got it. But I, I've been getting a lot of inquiries about whether this is taken from this year's police budget, and it is not. But the police budget is coming from the general fund, which is where all the tax, where all the revenues go into the general fund. The, the police budget's coming out of general fund, and this is separately otherwise coming out of the general fund. But we call it grants because we're putting basically the funding into like a program concept, right?
That's.
Would you call it that?
What, what are legislation that?
As opposed to one position or something like that?
Yes.
This, this does, however, reduce the police budget in the proposed budget sent over by the Pudido administration by simply moving that funding.
It's just moving it. I wouldn't, it doesn't, this doesn't cut any positions.
It does not cut positions, that is correct. It's additional operating funds, so it's not defunded.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Bill, it, amendment is approved, excuse me. Next amendment?
Oh, sure, I'll take this one. Councilman Gross can speak to the purpose, but to, to the math. Restoring one of the cut positions to city planning, adding four planners to city planning. Also in P L I, restoring four of the removed positions. Actually, I'm sorry, to six of the removed positions from P L I. And I'm adding some part timers in parks and recreation for food distribution. That adds up to about four million dollars. So to balance that, there's the need to reduce somewhere else in the budget. In this case, reduction of nine and a half police officers from the Bureau of Police for a net reduction of fifty thousand dollars to the budget over the five year plan.
Motion to amend. Mr. Chair.
We have a motion to amend on the table. Is there a second? There is no second, therefore that motion fails. Is there another budget? Is there another amendment, Council, Mr. Urbannick?
There are no other amendments at this time.
Thank you. So, as already noted, this was our line item budget. We will now discuss the budget in its entirety at our Wednesday Standing Committee meeting, this Wednesday, I believe, that's the sixteenth. With that, we have formally ended our budget hearing process, so we will now actually need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.